Good evening. Welcome everyone. Welcome to the Town of Cutler Bay's Town Council Meeting. Today's date is Wednesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Clerk, if you could please take a take a roll.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Lord?
Yes, here.
Member Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Here.
Mayor Mirbot?
Present.
Have a quorum.
All right, if you could all please rise with me and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, Mauricio, if you could please read the directions for calling in public comments.
Please be advised that when joining the meeting, you are automatically muted. Welcome to tonight's meeting. The public was able to make public comments prior to the meeting either by leaving a voicemail message or sending an email to the town clerk. There were no voicemails or email public comments for this meeting. If you wish to speak tonight, please press star nine and a host will be alerted. Pressing star nine is known as raising your hand. Once you press star nine, you will be placed in a queue to speak and will be called upon by your name or the last three digits of your telephone number. Please wait to be called upon. Please state your name and address. If you are a hired consultant or town employee and/or if you are engaged in lobbying activities and/or representing an organization, please provide that information before speaking. Please be sure to be in a quiet area to avoid unnecessary noise. A time limit of three minutes will be imposed for each speaker during public comments.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I'm going to open up the floor for public comments this time. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward. As there is nobody in the lobby wishing to speak at this time, is there anybody in the queue wishing to speak?
No one in the queue.
All right, public comments is now closed. We've all submitted our announcements and boarded committee reports. Are any deletions or additions to those reports from anybody? There are none. Okay. All right. Now we get to get to the good part. So we always, Cutler Bay likes to recognize some of our citizens who have done a lot just to make the quality of life better for everybody. And so many ways that we recognize citizens. There's there's heroes. There's people that contribute to the environment. There's people that contribute to the well-being and of our children. And we're going to recognize two people tonight that have made Cutler Bay a better place. So we're going to first going to recognize David Anasagasti. Easy for you to say. Anasagasti, David Anasagasti first, and then we're going to be recognizing Stephanie Keim. So if, David, if you could join us in the council down here at the front and the council, if you could join me for this proclamation. There we go. My pleasure. Sorry for not getting your name right the first time. Just way too many vowels there for me. It's like, all right, you can just stand over here by me. All right. All right, I think so. Yeah. All right. Whereas the Town of Cutler Bay takes pride in recognizing citizens whose contributions have served to elevate standards of life in our community. And whereas David Anasagasti, a passionate and innovative artist who was raised in Cutler Ridge, now the vibrant town of Cutler Bay, who attended Centennial Middle School, as I did, and you know, many of us here, also Southwood Senior High School. Whereas the month of April is celebrated as Earth Month, a time to be mindful of our planet and to recognize, recognize Anasagasti, who throughout his career has consistently demonstrated an exceptional commitment to environmentalism and artistic expression. And whereas the art project Geographies of Trash was organized in collaboration with Anasagasti, the FIU Radcliffe Art and Design Incubator and the Wilsonian Public Humanities Lab. And whereas his vision not only challenged perceptions of waste, but also showcased how art could serve as a powerful tool for community engagement and social change. And whereas through his creative efforts, David has helped to inspire a sense of pride and responsibility among residents, significantly contributing to the cleanup and revitalization of the South Florida community, including the town of Cutler Bay, making the environment both cleaner and more beautiful. Whereas the town wishes to express its gratitude and recognize artist David Anasagasti for helping clean our environment and turning trash into art. So now therefore be resolved that I, Tim Mirbot, Mayor of the Town of Cutler Bay, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the Town Council and citizens of Cutler Bay, call upon the good people of the Town of Cutler Bay to join me in honoring the wonderful legacy of our beloved friend to proclaim April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Geographies of Trash Day. Thank you for your contribution. All right. Stay here, council. Stay here because we got one more. Stephanie, if you could please join us up here. As you can tell, I don't know who Stephanie is. Never met her before. One in here. Right there's good. Okay. All right. All right. This proclamation, whereas the Town of Cutler Bay takes pride in recognizing citizens whose contribution have served to elevate standards of life in our community. And whereas in two thousand and eleven, Stephanie Keim was appointed as a member of the town's newly created Educational Compact Advisory Committee with the goal of partnering with Miami-Dade County Public Schools, bringing together each organization's collective resources for the benefit of the town students. With Stephanie's support and due diligence, this goal was accomplished, and she continued to be a pillar to the town's education efforts. And whereas Stephanie Keim proudly served as a member of the town's Educational Advisory Committee beginning in two thousand and thirteen and served as Chair of the Committee from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-five, demonstrating dedication and leadership while advancing the town's educational goals and fostering collaboration among residents, educators, the Miami-Dade County Public Schools, and other local organizations. And whereas Stephanie was also an advocate for the now established Cambridge and Coast Academies in our public schools, playing a key role in improving and maintaining academic success, while also organizing the town's educational summits by contributing her expertise and energy to ensure impactful, successful events that address the needs of our educational community. And whereas Stephanie has led with joy and inspiration, supporting her own children's involvement in town committees, ensuring that the next generation of leaders continue to serve and build on the foundation she has helped create. And whereas Stephanie has been a champion for Heart Charge, an organization established by her daughters Hannah and Bethany, for the sole purpose of helping to end preventable deaths from sudden cardiac arrest. And where it is, is with great respect and admiration that the town wishes to express its gratitude and recognize Stephanie Keim for being an outstanding community member and for her contributions as a member of the town's Education Advisory Committee. Now therefore be resolved, I, Tim Mirbot, Mayor of the Town of Cutler Bay, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the Town Council and citizens of Cutler Bay, call upon the good people of the Town of Cutler Bay to join me in honoring the wonderful legacy, our beloved friend, reclaim April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Stephanie Keim Day. Congratulations. You have your own day in Cutler Bay. Congratulations again. Thank you so much for everything you've done. Congratulations. All right. That takes us to our report. So Ralph, do you have a town manager's report, sir?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. First tonight, we have an update from our owner's rep, Emma Jones, regarding our sixteen-acre Legacy Park Municipal Complex. So Emma, if you're on the line.
Good evening, everybody. Emma Jones with Stantec, owner's rep for the Town of Cutler Bay. Really exciting news this week. We are, we have provided the notice to proceed for the Legacy Park to Kaufman Lynn that was delivered to them yesterday. So the project is officially underway. You will start to see equipment and everything out on site. It's very exciting. The working hours on site will be from eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, unless otherwise authorized by the town. The, just as a note to the general public, this is now an active construction site. So for the safety of town residents, I would like to note that note authorized in advance by Kaufman Lynn and the Town of Cutler Bay.
Excuse me. Sorry, Emma, if we could pause for maybe if you turn off your radio, we're having a hard time hearing you streaming. So maybe that'll provide you some more bandwidth there.
Sure. Is that better?
Yeah, if you could start from where you left off, we're Mondays through Fridays.
Absolutely.
We started cutting off. Thank you.
Absolutely. Sorry. Working hours on site will be eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, unless otherwise authorized by the town. I just wanted to note that this is now an active construction site. So for the safety of the town's residents, no access will be granted to the site unless authorized in advance by Kaufman Lynn and the Town of Cutler Bay. There will be weekly drone footage that will be uploaded to the website for everyone to view. That way you can see what's going on without having to set foot on the site. This current week, as I mentioned, Kaufman Lynn will mobilize to the site. You will start to see a construction entry being created. The construction trailer will be placed on site. A wash station will be implemented this weekend, next week for use during the carting of soils in and out of the site. And there will be dust monitoring set up for the duration of the project. The following week of the twenty-first, you will start to see the perimeter fencing moved. There will be silt fence installed and the existing monitoring wells on site will be decommissioned on the twenty-second and twenty-third of April. We have scheduled a small groundbreaking ceremony for the twenty-fifth at two PM. This ceremony will include council members and staff. Mayor Mirbot will film a public service announcement video, and that will be posted on the website on the same day. And we will have a larger formal groundbreaking celebration when we start the buildings in the GMP two phase. Tree removal on the site will begin on May second. As per, we have a permit approved by Derm. And I just wanted to remember, remind everyone at this time that all of the trees on the site will be removed. Unfortunately, none of them are able to be saved or relocated since they are in contaminated soil that has asbestos in it. So we are unable to move these trees to other locations. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have around this topic, but I just don't want you to be alarmed when the removing of trees commences.
Did you say asbestos or arsenic?
Sorry, I meant to say arsenic.
Thank you. Set me back for a minute. Okay.
Apologies. Apologies arsenic. The, the first truck hauling dirt will be around May fifteenth. And while you're seeing all of this activity on site, I just want to remind everyone that the design is ongoing. The construction documents are in process for the community center as well as the pool. And the town hall and police building floor plans are currently being refined and then will proceed into construction documents. And then we will provide new elevations of the project to the public once we have updated them to reflect the budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, any questions? The Vice Mayor Callahan, you're recognized.
Thank you. Not a question, but just a statement, I guess. Ralph, can we make sure that the menu board is updated? I got some, believe it or not, I got some comments on that.
Yes, you're, thank you, Vice Mayor, that we were supposed to have that updated about a week ago, and I apologize for that delay, but that's something we talked about internally. Emma, what he's talking about is the sites that are, the signs that are on site there, the billboards.
Yes, we are in the process of updating those with the new site plan as well as updated information. So we will, we are hoping to have those up by the end of the week. Apologies.
Good catch, Vice Mayor, because that's something we talked about. In fact, I said, just put them down. I'd rather, you know, not see them, but we'll, we'll get those changed. Okay. Well, thank you, Emma. So as you can see, Mayor, members of council, and there's going to be a lot of movement there. We're also, one of the things we're going to be doing is we're going to be working aggressively with homeowner associations there, providing them a lot of notices. I already spoke to some of the management companies there, letting them know we're going to put out our typical, you know, project flyer so they could go ahead and send it out to their, to the homeowner associations as well, because there's going to be a lot of activity there as well. And then we're going to be monitoring both the police department and the public works department, monitoring, you know, the dust controls and particularly along some of those streets that are going to be heavily traveled now. So, so thank you, Emma, for that. Next, Mayor, members of council, we have an update on Frangio Road project. We have your Stefano from Kimble Horn.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Stefano Viola with Kimble Horn Associates. Good to see you guys in person today. Excited about that. Giving you your monthly update on Frangio Road. As we currently stand, we are holding our bi-weekly meetings with the town contractor Acosta, the design Stantec and ourselves. We continue to have those. Acosta has wrapped up work zone one, but they are still working in there installing light poles and watering the grass. That will not impact access to any of the area, but they are finalizing some improvements within that area. They are also currently wrapping up work zone two, doing some of the streetscape improvements, light installation, landscaping, some of the curbing, and finalizing that area with the intent that they will be done this month in work zone two. They have also are actively in work zone three, really moving along in that area. They've installed the MOT from Frangio to Tiffany, from Tiffany Drive to Southwest one ninety-third, and they've installed the drainage structures at the intersection of Frangio and Tiffany, and they continue to work on the surrounding improvements of that intersection. At all times, they're keeping a safe and clean site, and we are working with the residents on those, any items that may arise during that project. As you see, the board has been updated and we are still showing a final completion of August twenty twenty-six. Sorry, hitting the wrong button. There you go. For the entire project, there have been some rain days recently and there's some unforeseen conditions. We are still tracking the schedule, but there may be some items that may arise, but we'll communicate to you those as they, they come up. At this point, I'll turn it over to Janet to cover the public involvement aspect.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Here's an update on the Frangio Road Improvement Project. Like Stefano said, we are finishing up phase two by the end of the month. We're continuing to go and working through phase three. We have the new maintenance of traffic, which I will be distributing to the residents that are in phase three. So I want to say that some residents are not visual learners, and it could be difficult for them to, to accept change based on plans or renderings alone. So thankfully, I've been able to put their minds at ease through continual visits, in-person updates, and open dialogue. I've found that more of the elderly residents, you know, it, it changes hard, right? So they see all of this construction and they can't visualize. So, you know, I must say I've, I've helped them visualize and, you know, continuing to visit them and ease their minds. And yes, I'm there for them at any. And yes, I'm there for them at any time. Any questions? Oh, all good?
Councilwoman Lord, you're recognized.
Thank you so.
A real quick question.
Sure.
Say that, that you are visiting with the residents and answering their questions. Are you literally going to their homes, knocking on doors?
Yes.
That's fantastic.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
Especially, yes, especially the ones that have reached out to, to the town. I visit them, introduce myself, give them my card and chit chat and learn about their families.
Give them an opportunity to.
Yes, and call me back, absolutely.
Great, I wanted to clarify that.
Of course.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you Stefano. Next up, Mayor, very proud to announce that we had almost like a big clean sweep at the recent American Public Works Association, the South Florida Chapter. And Alfredo Quintero, the, our public works director, but also the branch president, is going to be recognizing some of the, some of the awards and different categories that we have. So Alfredo.
Thank you Ralph. Good evening, Mayor Mirbot and Town Council. Alfredo Quintero, your public works director. I want you to know that I take great pride in all the hard work and accomplishments that our young town has achieved in our young history. And as a contract city, I recognize this is not possible without the help of our town consultants and town contractors, which to me are, are an extension of our town staff. I want you to know that I like to run a tight ship and I love to toot our own horn for all the roadway and drainage projects that Public Works has executed and that come in on time and under budget. And so I love to give recognition to my people for their hard work and dedication. As Ralph mentioned, I am the current serving APWA South Florida Branch Chair on my second year for a two-year term. And last week on April 10th, the branch hosted its annual awards and scholarship luncheon at the City of Hollywood. The South Florida Branch represents 70 municipalities and three counties. And in two weeks, on April 30th, the APWA Florida Chapter will host the annual awards and scholarship perception and banquet at the APWA Florida Chapter Expo in Orlando, Florida. The Florida Chapter represents 411 municipalities and 67 counties. And so I have some great news. Between the South Florida Branch and the Florida Chapter, our towns consultants and contractors are receiving a combined total of nine industry awards. And I would like to call up my award recipients one at a time for a photo with our honorable counsel. Starting with Stefano Viola. So Stefano, please come up here.
Counsel, join me down here.
So Stefano Viola is our town consultant with Kimley Horn and Associates. Kimley Horn has been one of our consultants since inception and Stefano will be receiving two individual awards. He received the APWA South Florida Branch Professional Manager of the Year Award for Stormwater and he will be receiving the APWA Florida Chapter Technical Innovation Award for Stormwater. And these awards are for the development of the town's 2024 Stormwater Master Plan, which takes into account six inches of sea level rise for future projects identified in the master plan. Thank you Stefano. Thank you. All right. So next I would like to bring up SRS Engineering, Inc. They are one of our three town consulting engineering firms and Ignacio said Altus coming up. Ignacio and his team are receiving three consultant awards. The first award is for the APWA South Florida Branch Consultant of the Year Award and Roads and Highways for the design of the Southwest 82nd Avenue Roadway Improvements and Traffic Circle Project. They are also receiving the APWA Florida Chapter Consultant of the Year Award for Roads and Highways for the same project Southwest 82nd Avenue. And their third award is for the APWA Florida Chapter Consultant of the Year Award in Stormwater category for the design of the Cutler Ridge Pines Drainage Sub Base and Water Quality Improvement Project. Good job, Ignacio. All right, next I would like to call Maggo, Inc., our town contractor. Mario Gonzalez and his daughter Gabriela Gonzalez will be receiving two awards. They received the APWA South Florida Branch Contractor of the Year Award in Roads and Highways for the construction of the Southwest 82nd Avenue Roadway Improvements and Traffic Circle Project. And they will be receiving also the Florida Chapter Contractor of the Year Award in Roads and Highways for the same project. This is a lap project funded, a project which was completed on time and over $230,000 under budget. So that's an amazing accomplishment. Thank you Mario. Good job Mario. And finally, I would like to recognize RG Underground, Inc., another of our town contractors. We have Ricardo Gonzalez, who's the president. And his team will be receiving two industry awards for the APWA South Florida Branch Contractor of the Year Award in Stormwater for the construction of the Cutler Ridge Pines Drainage Sub Base and Water Quality Improvement Project. And the Florida Chapter Award Contractor of the Year in Stormwater for the same project. And this project was completed on time and under budget by over $160,000. Just to add, this project was completed in record time. The schedule was for a year and he completed it in under eight months. So that's amazing. Good job to all my award recipients.
And Mayor Members of Council, if we could stay down there one more second. I have our own, very own Alfredo Quintero receiving an award. So Mayor Members of Council, Alfredo Quintero, our very own, received the President's Award for Branch Excellence. So what's that mean? This award recognizes Florida Chapter branches for contributions made to positively impacting their membership, profession and community. There's actually five categories that had to be met. Membership drives, service to chapter members, best practices, advancement of public works and service to our community. So Alfredo, congratulations. And he's actually, he's actually going to be receiving the award in Orlando. He's going to be receiving that award Orlando, but it's in between our council meetings. So I want to just go ahead and have him blush a little bit in front of us here. Congrats.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor Members of Council, a lot of those projects were actually funded through our ARPA program. So that's something that's really good to recognize.
Ralph, let me just interrupt real quick, because you know, when we go up to Tallahassee or to Washington, we have our books. When they give money to municipalities, they like to know that they're doing something good with the money. So we have a great track of not only doing things under budget, having a match, but also being award winning. So the entire team, Ralph, you and Alfredo and your rest of your team and all the contractors, thank you so much for making it easier for us to make our community better. And thank you for the work that you do to make the community better.
Yeah. Okay.
Go ahead Ralph, sorry.
So Mayor, some other, a couple of little items under my report. Great turnout for our summer camp registration that we host at Cutler Ridge Park. All four sessions are full and we actually have a waiting list of 20 kids deep in each session. So that is a popular camp. And then our STEM camp that we host here in the council chambers here, which has 40 spots, is open for registration. So far we have 12 applications and, and we have 28 slots available. Again, commercial plug, it is a free camp, a free STEM camp. So we're pushing that out through our social medias and through a lot of the middle school principals as well. Other good news, our voluntary cleanup tax credits, talking about our legacy park. We submitted our reimbursement with FTP last year for $94,000 and they approved every penny, which means that we're going to get 50%, $47,000 of it back in voluntary cleanup tax credits and the remaining will be provided once the entire brownfield is cleaned up. So that's some good news for reimbursements. Update on the Miami Dade County Bridge Project. I know that you've, a lot of folks have been receiving calls and emails about it. We, we contacted our friends from Miami Dade County Public Works Department. They informed us that the project was advertised on March 20th. There was a pre-bid meeting that took place on April the 10th. Bids are due on April 23rd and then the evaluation process will start. But Mayor Members of Council, I could tell you that not only the town, but also Commissioner Cohen Higgins staff is receiving, you know, biweekly updates from Miami Dade County Public Works Department. So that's, that's moving forward. We also are in the process of securing some quotes regarding strategic planning phase that we want to go through with the town council. As you know, our strategic master plan is at least four years outdated. And believe it or not, when we started going through the checklist, a lot of things we've already done. So we want to get to the point that I've actually been meeting with different consultants, getting different proposals and processes there. So you'll see something coming up in the next couple of months here as well. I know that's something that Alfredo mentioned, that some of those projects that, that we received awards came in under budget. Those are funded through the ARPA funds and because of the ARPA policy, funds that are budget, sorry, the projects that come in under budget, we could transfer money to another existing project, which is Frango Road. So just to give you an exact number, the project so far, Southwest 82nd Avenue and Cutler Ridge Pines combined have come in under budget of $392,000. What's that mean? $392,000 goes over to Frango Road, which means less PTP funds from the town. So that's, we're taking advantage of that. And lastly, I will be on, on vacation, believe it or not, two weeks, April 28th through the May 12th. And we'll have, as I typically do, you know, have a department head, you know, be acting manager as well. So I just want to, you know, provide that information too. So with that, and if there's any questions?
Any questions, my counsel? No?
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to the town attorney report.
So I was going to ask you if you would want to join a lawsuit being brought by the various municipalities in Miami Dade County to obtain a determination that the tax collector does not have legal authority to impose a 2% fee on municipal collections. But I think the, he must have heard whispers about it because he backed down. And he's not going to be imposing a 2% fee on municipal collections, at least for the time being. So we live to fight another day. That's my report for the month.
All right, thank you.
So you're 2% richer in addition to all the savings that Ralph just announced.
All right, anything else, sir? No, all right. Town Clerk's report.
The report this evening.
All right, that takes us to the consent agenda. Any item for the consent poll? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion, look for a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it passes, we're now opening up the floor for public comments. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? Come forward. Please give me your full name and address, please. Turn the mic on. You just push a button there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Mayor Mirbot. My name is Rami Hammer, address 18423 Southwest 87 Place. I called and left a message in regards to an agenda item I wanted to speak on tonight. My agenda item is the concern that I have with the peacocks that have infiltrated my community. I'd like to know what the Town of Cutler Bay plans on doing as it relates to relocating them.
Okay. Thank you. The public comments, we just saw it back and forth, but we'll go ahead and we'll see if we can have some staff give you some more information on what we can do with peacocks and whilst what related to what other communities can do as well. But you're not the first person to bring that forward. Thank you very much.
Okay. So somebody will be in contact with me?
Ralph, you can have the staff.
Yes, Vivian, my administrative service director, will get your contact information.
Okay.
She's right back there, Vivian.
Okay.
Right there. Thank you.
Okay, one more concern, please. I have one more concern and that is the racing that is apparently happening going down 184th Street. I don't know if this is a Cutler Bay issue or if it's a Palmetto Bay issue. But from my backyard, I hear the revving of motors, the racing of vehicles. This would be approximately 184 and 87th. And I'd like to know, are there any plans on, I don't know, posting officers to view this area? This happens during the weekends, during the week, I would not know, I'm working. So, but on the weekends, it's loud, it's it's diminishing my quality of life. And it's a concern for safety for children. So I'd like to know, do you have any plans?
I think we'll let the police know if you have any information on specific times, it'd be helpful for them for enforcement.
It's periodically throughout the day.
Okay.
Saturdays, Sundays. Again, like I said, Monday through Friday, I'm unaware.
All right, we'll let our police major know and ensure that there's more enforcement in that area if necessary. Okay?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else question, public comments, come forward. Need your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Julia Perez and I'm here on behalf of Vertiston Popolo.
Okay, I need your address.
I live in Miami Lakes, but we're here on.
I still need your, it's, it's public records requirement that you provide your address.
Okay, 14541 Cedar Court.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Julia Perez and we're here on behalf of Vertiston Popolo, a 501(c)(3) civics nonprofit based here in Miami Dade County. We're, we've worked on programs such as the Civic, the Civic's Bowl, Florida Student School Board and Member Initiative and Civic Excellence Gala. And we are currently working on expanding our youth governance state initiative. This is a program that we will select students with interest in government and leadership to serve as a mayor for the day in their town. This allows the student to experience government, meet officials, participate in workshops and get hands-on experience with civic leadership. This initiative builds towards the future of Miami Dade County by helping students understand the importance of local government, develop leadership skills and become more connected to their communities. We are here with the goal to expanding the youth governance state program to Cutler Bay and would, and would appreciate collaboration with the town and board on this project. This is beneficially for the town because it encourages civic engagement, builds positive relationships between students and local government and showcases a commitment to youth and education. We have previously worked with municipalities such as North Miami Beach, Ball Harbor, Medley and Miami Lakes and hope to work with Cutler Bay this year as well. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. If you could please provide our town clerk the information for consideration. Okay. All right, anybody else wishing to speak? I wouldn't, when public comments closed. Okay, all right. I'm talking about public comments, right? So, all right, yeah. Public, is there anybody in the queue?
No one in the queue.
Public comments is now closed. Council Vice Mayor Callahan, did you have a question or? Yeah, through the chair, I'd like to request that we schedule a workshop so we can discuss and finalize the COLA issue before we start getting into, into budget season. I want to go into that with all of us being on the same page. Okay. All right, I will work with the clerk and see if we can set up a workshop for that to be discussed. Would you have a timeline? I would, yeah, I would prefer it to be done prior to us getting into budget discussions. Yeah. Okay. All right, I will work with a clerk and we'll set up a workshop to discuss the COLA issues. Okay. All right, Councilwoman Lord, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I recently learned that we have a new director for Animal Services. I've had some conversations with our town manager and I am a, for those who don't know, I am a huge advocate for animal welfare. I personally have adopted three dogs from Animal Services and one from a group that worked closely with Animal Services. The last of the four recently passed away a couple of months ago at the ripe old age of 19. So I would consider it an honor if the board would allow me to direct the staff to work with the new director in Animal Services. They have done work with us in the past. We have had them at one of our Active Adult Life Convention events. And I think that event elicited three adoptions that day. So I think it would be a great crossover with our active adults programs. We, we have a unique position in this town. We have yards for the most part. We can foster larger dogs. There are programs for this already established. So it is a personal joy of mine to try and find placement for these animals. So if with your direction, if it's okay, if I can continue to work with staff. So if with your direction, if it's okay, if I can continue to work with staff and see if we can do some crossover maybe with the, the youth council, you know, there's so many opportunities we as a community can offer to these, these animals that need homes.
I don't think anybody on the council would have any objections. No, not at all.
Okay. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.
Mayor.
Seeing how that is, one of the programs that the youth council has wanted to take on their own, not just in adopting animals, but also in adopting senior animals, a little bit older. So I think this is a win-win for not just the town council, but, but for Animal Services overall. And thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Lord.
All right, anything else? No? All right, this meeting.